I'd like to go ahead and bring the public hearing section of the Warrenton Board of Alden meeting for June 5th, 2018 in session. With that, I will turn it over to Dana. Good evening.
First, we'd like to address the public hearing on the sewer rates. So I would like to make part of the public record, the municipal code by reference, and public hearing notice published in the Warren County Record on May 25th, 2018. The proposed rate increase for sewer is 4 percent, which is the amount that's included in the revenue bond offering statement calculation for the 2018-19 budget. The average in-town residential customer will see an increase of eighty-nine cents a month, and the average in-town commercial customer will see an increase of $2.83 a month. The rate increase will be effective August 1st, 2018, upon approval of the ordinance by the board.
What was the individual average?
The individual average will see an eighty-nine cent increase per month.
Any other questions?
Okay. So that was the sewer. So on the water, I would like to make part of the public record, the municipal code by reference, and public hearing notice published in the Warren County Record on May 25th, 2018. The proposed rate increase for water, again, is 4 percent, which is the amount that's included in the revenue bond offering statement calculation for the 2018-19 budget. The average in-town residential customer will see an increase of seventy-eight cents a month, and the average in-town commercial customer will see an increase of $3.26 a month. The rate increase will be effective August 1st, 2018, upon approval of the ordinance by the board.
Thank you.
Okay.
At this time, we're going to open up the floor to anybody who'd like to come and speak just on the public hearing section of this meeting. We'll give you five minutes to speak. Please come to podium and state your name. Not seeing anyone, we'll go ahead and bring the public hearing section to a close. We'll open the regular Board of Alden meeting for June 5th, 2018 at this time. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item will be the consent agenda.
First item is the regular meeting minutes from May 15th, 2018, the minutes from the joint meeting with the Warren County R3 School District, and liquor license renewals for 2018, 2019, in the amount of $12,637.50.
Any questions? Motion to approve. Second. Motion made by Alderman Schultz, signed by Alderman Shelby, approved the consent agenda items. Vote by vote, please.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. Next will be the introduction of new employees.
I would like to introduce our new accounts payable and payroll clerk. This is Lisa Houston, and we welcome you to the city.
Welcome.
Welcome, Lisa.
I would like to introduce Deborah Zadro. She is our new Public Works Administrative Assistant. She began on May 29th.
Welcome. Thank you. Next item is hearing from the public. We ask that you come to the podium, state your name, and we'll give you five minutes to speak on any matter you need to speak on.
My name is Dan Jaspering. I own Dan the Man Bail Bonds here in Warren. I think most of you all know me or know of me. My issue is parking on Main Street with your advertising. I mean, most of us, almost all of us have storefronts with their names on it. I have a name on my truck, which I park when I'm working in front of my truck. There's another bondsman here in town that is not from this town that has an office up the street. He parked his van in front of the jail for two days. They finally made him move it. Now, the ordinance states that two-hour parking is what it's supposed to be on Main Street. Over 25 hours is abandonment. So he moved it up the street, not in front of his office, but in front of NCCAC, for three weeks in one spot. I called the city police again, and I said, "You told me the ordinance is 25 hours." They said, "Well, you're kind of nitpicking." Okay, well, if I'm nitpicking, what's to stop everybody that owns businesses on Main Street to park all their vehicles right in front of their business with their advertising all over? And then what happens to the other patrons that want to park anywhere on Main Street? So if one person can do it, and I go out and buy four or five old vehicles with their license and park it on Main Street with my name all over, I'm taking away from all the patrons that try to park in front of businesses. If I can park it anywhere, I want to. So the issue is, is this ordinance real or is it not? I mean, can you park as long as you want to in one spot? As we speak right now, this vehicle's been parked in front. Now it is in front of his office, basically, since Friday. So it hasn't moved, and when it does move, it moves from NCCAC to in front of dude's barber shop, possibly in front of his, one or two times. And the only time it moves is if he comes into this town to go to court. Now, I understand if you're busy. If I'm working, my vehicle is going to be parked in front of my office, and I have a side parking also, as does almost everybody on Main Street. Businesses, we don't park in front of our offices normally. We park in our parking lots. So that's the issue. Should you be allowed to park as long as you want on Main Street? Or should it be... Should the ordinance be enforced?
Chief, is the ordinance, as you understand it, what Mr. Jaspering is describing?
The way I understand the ordinance is that between the hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, it's two-hour parking in a spot. So if you move your vehicle from one spot to another, you're still in compliance with a parking. And nowhere that I've found anywhere does it state that you can't have words printed on your vehicle while it's parked.
Well, I don't think that's the issue at all. I think that's been court-tested many, many times. I do think it's, you know, it could be, as Mr. Jaspering is describing, it could be a huge problem if everybody did the same thing. I mean, we expect our citizens to abide by the letter and the intent of the law, and obviously, this sounds like an attempt to put a billboard on Main Street 24/7. It's frustrating to me and probably other board members because we, as you know very well, have worked quite hard to make sure we've got adequate parking for the downtown district. So if this business wanted to park off-street, if it is just an issue that he wants to have a second, he or she wants to have a second vehicle in town, we've certainly got parking lots available to do that. So...
The... This isn't... The other individual, I'm sorry. The other individual that's in question is fully also aware of the ordinance, and every time that this is brought to our attention, he's handing, he's holding a copy of the ordinance and says, "I moved my vehicle."
Well, he hasn't moved at this time, because he's right. I had another complaint, or not a complaint, but a question about it. So Friday afternoon, I saw it, and I counted the number of spaces he was, where he was parked, and it's still in the seven space from the corner. So I think that's, you know, just grossly overstaying, and I don't know what, if he's trying to make an issue of it, or what he's trying to do. It's obvious he wants his advertising out there, and it's just, I think, because it does bring up the point. Person, the other person that brought it to my attention said the same thing, said, "Well, I'll just get my pickup truck, put a big sign on the back of it, and park it." So if it starts, where's it going to end? That's what I see as wrong. And I know years ago, you brought up the two-hour parking. And years ago, we, I think the police, you know, they would mark tires to mark the two-hour parking. That became, that was, you know, that was, you remember when that happened, I think, Greg? We didn't want that. We don't want that. And I don't really want to press that issue, but I think when somebody's there five, four or five days, that's over the ordinance. That's abandonment.
Go ahead. Because we know we're going to have to give you the full three minutes.
We all remember the time when the meters got put out downtown. How long did they last? A week? Week and a half before they got removed? I just warn you, as we've gone back and forth with parking, if we go to enforce parking downtown, we have to do it uniformly. We can't do it complaint-driven. So the way we do it is either by meter or chalk in the tires, and then we write the tickets to people that park over the two hours. So I understand this may be an issue for you, sir, but that it, every time we jump into the parking issue, it becomes something where we don't want to go that far. So just from an enforcement perspective, we have to enforce the ordinance uniformly, and understand that's going to require chalk in the tires, everything that's over two hours, writing the ticket, and dealing with it that way. I just want to make sure that's clear.
I think there's two things we need to do. Number one, we need to readdress that ordinance. We're not going to do the two-hour parking. We need to modify that.
Yes.
The second thing I think we need to do is uniformly have you check different cities for any ordinances for advertisements on Main Street. I agree. We get into political time, I'm going to bring it up on a different level. On a political time, people with huge signs make it a safety hazard for people to back out of parking lots.
And we've dealt with that when it's a safety hazard. We have required it to move, but there is some first amendment rights with regards to what you have on the front of your car.
I understand that, but there's also safety issues we can make considerations as well.
Yeah, I agree with that when it's a safety issue.
So I've been here for all of this.
I've just heard rumors, legends of the meters.
And I think Alderman Ock has been here for much of this. I don't want to see us go back to parking meters. I think that's why the city, you're seeing us be so aggressive in providing off-street parking. I don't want to see law enforcement spending their time marking tires. I don't think that's a good use of law enforcement. But I do think that we certainly should be able to come up with an ordinance that doesn't allow overnight parking on Main Street. I think you need to stop talking about whether the vehicle's got advertising or not. It's a licensed vehicle. It has, doesn't make any difference if it's a Budweiser truck, sorry, Mike, Tri-County Agency truck. Those are legal, licensed vehicles, and they have every right to go up and down Main Street or any street and park anywhere. So my issue is the overnight, the long stay piece to this, because I think he, this sounds to me like this individual is using this as an advertising tool, pretty inventive, I guess. I think we need to come up with a limitation in terms of how long anyone can do that. To me, 24 hours is more than long enough for a vehicle to occupy a stall on Main Street, because as Mr. Jaspering has said, if we get everybody doing this, we can't buy enough land to provide enough parking places. And I don't think that's where we want to go. So my balance is to try to make this not a full-time job for law enforcement, but to find a solution. And we need some cooperation from this individual. He's obviously just using the system, it looks to me like, right now.
With that being said, I'm going to ask Mr. Jaspering, you've got to give us a little time to investigate into it, come up with an answer.
Sure.
We'll keep you informed. It's not that we won't. You brought it up to us. It's now on the record. We'll definitely keep you informed on what's going on, and you're not the only voice that's been heard on that.
Yeah. All right.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
If nothing else for the board, I think that's a talking point we can bring up at some other time and put it on the agenda for discussion.
I would ask the Administrator to come back for, or the Attorney to come back with a good recommendation on it.
Yeah, we'll work on it Thursday.
Chief?
We can do that.
We can do that. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Jaspering.
Would anybody else like to come up and speak in the public? All right. We'll move on. The next is Board of Alden comments.
The only thing I have is, this kind of goes out to the public, that this Friday at Dyer Park, we're having a concert in the park, free concert in the park. It'll be a Micopirion III band, and again, everybody come on out. It's support the Arts Council and the Warrenton Parks Department. We had a good turnout for the first one in May, and I think the word's getting out. The Arts Council is also doing some additional things this year. There's going to be T-shirts available that'll have the logo, Concert in the Park logo on the front, and a schedule on the back. This could be kind of a fundraising thing for the Arts Council, so...
So it's June 8th, 2018, at what time?
About 7:00.
7:00 PM.
Dyer Park.
Excellent.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thanks.
I'd like to mention to the board that I met with the Downtown Association, Merchant Association, the last two Monday nights, in fact, as they finalized the event coming up on June 23rd from 2:00 to 7:00 PM. Their first attempt at doing a downtown event that brings families down. They want to have vendors, and they're doing that, getting vendors ready to come down, and we're going to do some closing off the streets for them. I let them know that we're supporting them. We're in the midst of revitalizing downtown, and they're doing the same thing, so we certainly should be working together. They have a lot of good ideas, but it takes time and lots of effort to make it work, and I think they're going to get it done. I'm real pleased with their efforts so far, and I just wanted to give the board an update of what's going on. That's going to be here before we know it, so just get behind and support it.
Thank you. Close that door. There again, that's June 23rd from 2:00 to 7:00 PM. It's the Downtown Market. Excellent. Thank you.
And Mayor, I do not have a Chamber of Commerce report. We will be meeting tomorrow at noon, and so I'll have that for the board at our next meeting. Thank you very much.
Anything else from anybody? Moving on to Mayor's comments. I'm going to keep mine short and sweet. I thank everybody for my absence last meeting. Thank you for filling in, Gary, or Alderman Miller. I appreciate it. And thank you for everybody else's understanding. Hopefully, that won't happen too much more. Also went for, right out to the new pool park, and wow, that place is really coming along. I don't know if you have any updates you want to say about it or not, but I'll tell you, I was quite impressed when I drove out there, even though I feel like I violated a rule by saying "construction only," but I had to sneak a peek.
Yeah, it's coming along quick. It's looking really good.
Weird, Mayor. Yeah, right.
Did you hear that, Chief?
I don't go out there anymore since Boozy Cruz says I couldn't.
Well, he's not here tonight, so you go out there. Tonight.
Let me know. Let me go. Tell him you're going.
So moving on to the next one, we'll, next item is the approval for the catered liquor license for Oliver's Restaurant for Fall Fest 2018. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So move. Again?
Motion made by Alderman Shelby, and I apologize, I'm not hearing to Alderman up here, and signed by Alderman Costello. Vote by vote, please.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shell Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Deloitte?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. I probably need it, just to be honest. Next item on the agenda will be the discussion topic. That'll be the potential retail overlay district.
Now, I contacted Terry and asked that we would consider putting this on the agenda. You know, since we're so sales tax-driven, and we're also sales tax-driven to interstate traffic, it seemed to me as you drive around different areas and you see the potential for businesses going in that are non-sales tax-driven, you would think we're losing an opportunity. And I would just throw out two examples that are there right now. On the southeast corner of the 47 and Highway 70, you have a medical building. Good-looking building, less needed thing for the community, but it really doesn't generate sales tax in a corner that would seem logical, be a sales tax corner. And the other example would be where the school administration building is sitting, an area that at one time had some retail sales in it, but now it no longer does. So I think as we plan or think about what's critical to growth and revenue in the city, the concept came up to me is, do we need to look at laying out a, basically, a sales tax-driven layer of a zone where the business would have to demonstrate some percentage of their revenue comes in through retail sales as a way of making sure that we're have the best, most appropriate use for space? The other example I would also throw out is where the old, where the Hardee's building was, was turned into a loan company. A loan, it's on a major strip, could be tremendous sales tax location, but we allowed it to turn into an office building. So the thought is, should we look at a section of town saying, since we're so focused on sales tax revenue, we're focused on interstate, should we talk about making a huge strip that says, "This is sales tax driven only"? Another example might be, we approved the exercise facility that's over on the South Service Road. They just came in and were approved to put a bigger building in. Well, that's, I don't think it drives much sales tax. I don't think it drives any sales tax. And so we have a large swath of land there between the two interchanges that's no longer going to be a source for sales tax revenue. So that's my thinking on maybe we need to consider doing something like a layover district.
Is this an idea that you've seen demonstrated in another community or...
No, this was just one of my things as I am driving around. I mean, you drive, you observe, let's say, corners, let's say, the new interchange where Wright City's at, you have one corner that's tremendously developed for retail sales, but the other three corners really aren't, or don't have that potential. So you say you make this huge investment into interchange, and all of a sudden, you can't derive revenues to support the interchange. And so I'm trying to think forward, because as we open up the new interchange west of town, we want, do we want something to develop there that doesn't have sales tax potential? And I would think, my answer would be no. So that's the thinking on that. You know, the stretch between, like I said, you've got a lot of space between, between the old interchange and the new one on the south side, that I would think you want to have sales tax potential being a key element of that. And there's nothing in the ordinance now, the way it's written, that would allow us to do anything. So in theory, let's say somebody went into the New Outlet Center, and that's not going to happen, because Art King has a motive for putting sales tax in. But if it was somebody who didn't, they could put a school, they could put a university, whatever they wanted there. But it doesn't really help the city's financial perspective from a sales tax standpoint.
And Gary, the way, okay, the way I see you, if that's miswritten, the area west of MM, south of Highway 47?
Well, I think...
South of 70, I'm sorry.
Yeah, south of 70.
Now, we got, so that is all, isn't that what we already approved for?
Well, there's a section again there that we approved for, was it...
Commercial, residential.
Residential section. So that's what I'm trying to look ahead to saying.
That's south of railroad. This is north of the railroad, Mike.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So that's what I'm saying, in that area there, if somebody were to, obviously, no one's going to come in and put a residential property between the highway and the rail tracks there. But on the other hand, you could have some type of development going there that didn't really generate any sales tax at all.
No, I see what you're getting at.
No. And this isn't, you know, I think this is a draft of space that, you know, probably Terry worked up as potential overlay district.
Well, I think the map that you're looking at is the part that was approved for sign purposes as a highway overlay district, because they can have larger signs for larger developments there.
Right. So that's my thinking, is do we need to consider that? Because I would hate to lose any of the vacant ground between the two interchanges to functions that aren't going to generate sales tax. Because if generates, you know, real estate taxes, that's really not a significant portion of our revenue at all. I mean, it's minuscule. So that's the thinking. Should we be proactive and think about this now, as opposed to approving things that then go, "Oh, why we missed an opportunity"?
Do you see any limitations to that, Counselor?
Well, I think, the question that Alderman Costello asked was, are there other places that do this? Absolutely, there's special zoning districts that are generated highway, highway retail or whatnot that are, have some limited range in there. And it's something that can be done and is done in other communities. Couple of observations I would say is, I probably wouldn't do it as an overlay district, because typically, your overlay district is giving more rights than what the underlying zoning district, so it's kind of a stack of a cake where, you know, you typically wouldn't kind of invert that. You'd almost create a highway retail district or something like that, that you would put that in there, and you would want to conform it in a way that did not, you know, I think, make the property owners thinking you were taking away some of their land use rights by, you know, implementing the retail zoning district. And when Terry and I discussed it this afternoon, I think, kind of even expanding on what you were saying, Alderman Ock, is we've got this set zone that we've looked at, parking in this district, we've looked at, signs in this district. What are other things that we can incentivize retail development within this, within this district to really focus on it and look at communities like Lake St. Louis, where they have the outlet mall, and then the, on the other side, the development, to really promote retail growth in the valley? What do they do? What kind of infrastructure? So even expanding it beyond just the concept of a zoning limitation, but also incentivizing to say, "This is a good place to put some retail." So I, it's definitely something we can do, but I think one of the things we talked about is, let's look at some of these other heavy retail, you know, municipalities and retail-based municipalities, and see what they did to really focus concentrated areas where they wanted to retail to grow. And I think it'll probably be some type of combination of creating a new retail zoning district, but also maybe even some other things as far as long-range planning with accessibility streets and whatnot as well. So that was kind of our thought on it, is maybe not just look at it as, let's change it to a zoning district that only allows this, you know, expand it beyond that, talk to other cities, see what they do to really promote it in a concentrated area, and, you know, probably not do an overlay district, but create a new zoning district. It would be some type of retail associated. And I don't think we can make it just retail, Mayor. I think we have to give them some ability to use their land, and then obviously, the people, the martial arts center, they're going to be illegal non-conforming use. They got their zoning, and they'll continue to exist. But I think there's some things we probably can do, and we probably need to educate ourselves to really try to figure out how other cities have been able to promote concentrated retail development.
Will this require changing some of the zoning ordinances or...
It will, but understand, it would be a change to the comp plan by the Planning and Zoning Commission and a creation of a new zoning district. We've created new zoning districts. It's not that difficult to do. It's just integrating it all together. It's not, you know, the, changing the comp plan to have a concentrated retail area is really just a resolution of the comp plan. We've already changed the comp plan one, one minor... We've already changed the comp plan, one, one minor tweak since we got it regarding zoning districts. So, it's not even difficult, it's not difficult to do.
So, so what I'd like to see if maybe, I don't know, Terry, you could sit down with Chris and come up with some draft idea of what, what we're trying to accomplish. Because I think this really is forward looking. I mean, I just would hate to see us invest so much money in an interchange and then lose the capacity to make the debt service payments because some of the property starts developing in a certain way. And I, and I certainly think there has to be some kind of guideline in there, it says a certain amount of your revenue has to be sales tax driven. So you're not writing off every use, but you still want that one use in there.
We can do that.
Good idea. Another discussion?
Next, we'll hear from City Administrator Terry Thorpe.
The only thing I have for you this evening is a reminder that next Tuesday, we have a budget work session to review our new budget plan. That starts at five thirty on Tuesday evening.
I think it's the eleventh, isn't it?
Twelve.
Twelve. So it's June twelfth, two thousand and eighteen, on Tuesday, five thirty PM.
That's all? Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Director of Operations, Brandy Walters.
Good evening. The first thing that I have is the monthly marketing and business support report. And, as you can see, our new potential lead contacts kind of went up quite a bit this month, and that's pretty much because Dolores went out to the recon show out in Vegas, and she was there for two days and got quite a bit of contacts out there, so she's following up with all of those. So that's why that number's a little bit higher than what it normally is. We did have one ribbon cutting this month in May, and that was with Main Street Real Estate. I think a lot of the folks were there, that was a big turnout. Turned out really good. And we are, I believe our next business, hopefully to do a ribbon cutting, is going to be the Two Girls Artisan Group on Main Street.
Heard a lot of good things about that business.
Yeah.
Ms. Mayor, before we move on-
That's fine.
Do, do we want to go back and maybe have Terry talk a little bit about the work session, or you want to save that for later? Just to kind of let the public know or rattle?
Purely up to you, I'd be happy to.
I think it's, I mean, my thinking, it's such a project that people are really interested in, it wouldn't hurt if we could just, just a little, a few comments, because it's still lots up in the air, but the board, I think, has an intent.
Well, I think, I think we can talk about the, definitely the direction we're moving in, and, and, you know, I think that's fair enough.
Don't we do that?
Yes, please.
Sure. So this evening, prior to this meeting, the board met with Brian Eads, who is the engineer the city has hired to complete a study related to sidewalk improvements on North Highway forty-seven. Brian presented a draft of that document that they've come up with, which determined basically where sidewalks could be located to be able to offer connecting sidewalks all the way from I-70 north to Hickory Lick Road, with the intent of getting pedestrians off the roadway and giving them safe places to travel. The result of that study was that it appears that the best location for sidewalks from I-70 up to Fairgrounds Road looks to be on the west side of the roadway. And then at Fairgrounds Road would cross over, and sidewalks would then be on the east side of Highway forty-seven. A lot of that is depending upon where existing obstacles and barriers are, where culvert ditches are, where utilities are located, so there's a lot of different pieces that play into that. And it certainly will be built so that it utilizes the best locations, as opposed to it always being adjacent to the side of the road, or it always being a foot off the side of the road. It will be what I would call meandering to make best use and to have to obtain the smallest amount of easements to get the sidewalk accomplished. They also looked at a few locations where there are roadways that come out onto Highway forty-seven to determine if there are traffic signals that are warranted. And what they found is that utilizing MODOT's standards for signal warrant, that there are no locations in that stretch that would warrant typical traffic signals. They did find that there are some of those intersections that potentially would be allowed to have some turn lanes, both right and left turn lanes. And that really depends on both MODOT's agreement and how that fits within their plan. Because it is a MODOT roadway, any plans, be it for sidewalks or changes to the street, would be something that we would have to partner with MODOT on to get approval for any of those improvements. Moving forward, the plan as the board discussed tonight would be to have CMT engineers formalize the rest of the study and make it final. We'll be meeting with MODOT and getting that arranged in the near future so that we can get them involved, make sure they are in agreement with our plan and with the project that the engineers have put together. We will be seeking a cost share arrangement with MODOT later on this year for a fifty-fifty cost share split. Right now, the estimated total project cost is about one point seven million dollars. A lot of that will be dependent upon the amount of easements that end up being required, as well as how many of the turn lanes that MODOT is in agreement that they would approve being installed now. So, we will be pushing this project forward in as quick a fashion as is possible. The most optimistic project completion that we would actually be walking on sidewalks would be by the end of two thousand and twenty. And understand, that is a very optimistic view. But that's what we're going to, that's what we're going to shoot for, that's what we're going to try to accomplish. A lot will be dependent on how long it actually takes to obtain the easements that are necessary to get the sidewalks in place. But we'll be moving forward with it. We will be including in the budget that the board will be reviewing next Tuesday, the cost of the preliminary engineering to get started on those documents, as well as some funding for the easement portion, so the project doesn't slow down while we wait on the cost share approval for the MODOT portion of the funds.
So to sum that up, as promised, progress.
Progress will be moving forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Brandy?
Okay, so the next thing that I have is the monthly admin report. And as you can see, we had one accident that was not a claim. It was another individual hit one of our vehicles. There wasn't any damages or anything like that, no injuries. So it really, there's not a claim on that one. The, we've been doing lots of interviews, as you can see, over the last month, so hopefully we'll get all of our positions filled. And, we did not have any tournaments in May, but I wanted to let you know this last weekend, we had a tournament that had twenty-seven teams out here in the city. So, that was pretty big. And then we have another one coming up this weekend. It's not near as big as that one, it's going to be a smaller tournament, but they're looking at the one on the thirteenth of this month to be very large as well. So hopefully we'll have a big turnout on that one. That's about all that I have for that report.
Any questions?
The next thing that I have is the tourism recommendation. The tourism, this is for the reimbursement for the event coordinator positions throughout the year. So this is an annual reimbursement that the city gives to the Tourism Commission for seventeen thousand, seven hundred, thirty-four dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Any questions on that? I want to entertain a motion to approve the tourism recommendations in the amount of seventeen thousand, seven hundred, thirty-four dollars?
Remove. Second.
Motion made by Alderman Costello, signed by Alderman Shaw Harvey. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Shaw Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
The next thing that I have is the demean change order, and this is actually a decrease for the Aquatic Center for six thousand and seventy-five dollars.
Any questions on that? I want to entertain a motion to approve the demean construction change order number five, in a decrease, decrease amount of six thousand, seventy-five dollars. So move.
Second.
Motion made by Alderman Schultz, signed by Alderman Delloy. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Costello?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw Harvey?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Yes. Hang on one sec, Brandy. Could we go back to Brandy on about the tourism recommendations? Do we, and maybe this is for Terry, do we need to, do we want to tell the public about the change we made with regards to supporting the Veterans Memorial thing?
I would suggest we do that after the budget's approved.
After the budget?
It's included in the budget, but budgets aren't approved yet.
Okay. Just write down, take what up the budget. And will we be having a, a session of discussion about the budget?
Tuesday night. Next Tuesday night.
So that's when we'll cover?
Yes.
I have, another thing for you is Spectre Lake up at Binkley, that is going to be closed to everyone, to the public, from June eighteenth to July ninth, because we have a muskrat problem that they have to get rid of. So they're going to have to trap muskrats to keep from damaging the dam.
Or we get some holes in the dams and then a problem.
Yeah. As far as the park goes, we're getting the, if you guys have been out there, they're putting in the electric, we're about halfway-
I haven't, but maybe I have.
Yeah. The electric is about halfway through the park now, and there's going to be streetlights up throughout the park, and those will be arriving next week, so hopefully those will be going up pretty soon. Brett's crews been working on that, so that'll be-
I've flown over to see it, because you can't go back there.
Clearance. Did you fly your drone?
Clearance. Have to have clearance on that.
That's all I have for you.
Does Brad clear us to go back there?
No, I stopped asking. I was going to say the same answer.
Thank you, Brandy.
Thanks.
Before we move away from Brandy's report, I, I'd just like to let the public know, and in some of the board members I've shared this with, that in talking, in talking to one of the local realtors here in our community, they just couldn't be busier. They said that they literally have one property that they have three contracts on backing each other up in-house. And the comment was made that she's not sure how much longer that type of busy period can continue. It's similar to what we were seeing back pre-two thousand and eight. I'm not sure we want to see it get that hot as it was then, but it, it just tells you a little bit about what's going on in the community, and, and apparently they need more and more listings, can't get enough, so, pretty, pretty busy time in the real estate business.
I agree.
Anything else? There you go.
I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Finance Officer Dana Blask, Blaska, sorry. Did I say it correct?
Yes.
You gotta get me, I gotta get used to it, I'm sorry.
In your packets, you received some listings for claims for payments. So one of the listings was for utility deposit refunds. So either those residents that have had two years good pay, or folks that have moved out of a residence and got a partial application of the deposit and the balance, you know, applied to, paid back to them. So the, the claims on deposit refunds, two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-four cents. The second report is actually claims for invoices to be paid by the city. One million, seventy-four thousand, nine eighty-seven, and sixty-three cents. And again, the larger dollar amount related to the pool construction, a four hundred and seven thousand dollar payment to Demeen, who has been very busy out there on that pool. We also had a debt service payment for the two thousand and fourteen revenue bonds, which was for the sewer system improvement, so that was four hundred and forty-one thousand. So it is a rather large packet, but I'm looking for your approval to pay those claims.
And just to get that correct, that's one million, seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars, sixty-three cents?
Correct.
Okay. I'll, any questions in regards to that? I'll entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable in the amount of one million, seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents.
So bid.
Motion made by Alderman Miller, signed by Alderman Shaw Harvey. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Delloy?
Yes.
Alderman Schultz?
Yes.
Alderman Shaw Harvey?
Yes.
Alderman Costello?
Out of an abundance of caution in regard to any possible conflicts of interest, I mean, I didn't see anything on the listing this evening, but I'm going to abstain, and I will typically do that on most lists, since the company I own stock in does do this for the city, I think it's probably best I just abstain from the payment of accounts, accounts payable.
Motion passes five, five to zero with one abstain. The monthly finance report?
Okay. You also received a financial statement review, so I'll just touch on some of the highlights, and please ask questions as we go along. General fund, expenses slightly higher than revenues at this point in the year, so a hundred and seventy-four thousand expenses exceed revenues. Then as I go through the general fund revenues and touch on the highlights in there, a sales tax. So sales tax, at this point in the year, is about one, within about one percent of the budgeted amount, it's slightly over budget. So the sales tax revenue is two point, two-nine-five million, with a budget of two point two-eight-nine. So just slightly above budget on sales tax. Real estate, personal property tax, for the year-to-date number, about three hundred and, three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars over budget. For police activity, fines and such, that's slightly under budget by about a hundred and forty-three thousand. And in the area of expenses for the general fund. Some of the highlights, again, within the police department, they're below their cumulative budget by two hundred and fifty-six thousand. And primarily, that's in the area of payroll-related accounts, two hundred and fifteen thousand below budget in payroll. Again, they've had some staffing shortages throughout the year. As we look to the street department, they're about eighty-six thousand dollars, eighty-six thousand below budget. Again, payroll-related, twenty-six thousand. The others are some timing issues on some operating and supply accounts. Grounds and maintenance department, about fifty-one thousand under budget, and again, primarily in the payroll area, thirty-three thousand below budget in that area. Then as we move to the enterprise fund, the water and sewer, they are spending, they're right now, their revenues versus their expenses, expenses at this point in time shows a negative one point five million. Again, that's only because it includes the three million dollars worth of activity on the sewer expansion project. In the revenue area, they're over budget on revenues, a total of about three hundred and eight thousand. In the industrial sewer is a big part of that, a hundred and ninety-eight thousand over budget, and that's mostly related to the Coca-Cola facility. When we look at expenses, we look at water expense, they're below budget in water by about seventy-eight thousand dollars. Again, primarily payroll-related, thirty-three thousand dollars below budget in payroll. And we talk about sewer, they're under budget expense-wise by about a hundred and three thousand. Again, thirty-four thousand dollars worth of that related to payroll. So, everyone's had some staffing issues throughout the year. So, that is the financial statement for April this year.
Any questions? Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Chief Police Larry Elliott.
Good evening. The only items I have for you this evening are two new policies for your review and approval. The first labeled the chief's bridging document is language required by Kalia to ensure continuity of policy during the accreditation process and any change- during the accreditation process and any change in command, and it also adds language that allows any employee, they notice a conflict in a new policy and an old one, that they can bring it to our attention through a memo. And the second is also required is a mission statement and statement of values.
Any questions on either one of those, sir? I'll entertain a motion to approve the chief's bridging docu, chief's bridging document and mission statement and statement of values policies as submitted.
So moved. Second.
I'm sorry, he was the second. Motion made by Aldman Shaw Harvey, signed by Aldman Schultz. Roll call vote, please.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shaw Harvey?
Yes.
Aldman Costello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero, and that's all I have. Thank you very much, sir. Next, we'll, we'll be at the bills of ordinance. I will entertain a motion for the first reading of bill number 22-18. So moved.
Second.
Motion made by, I'm sorry, even a second. Motion made by Aldman Shaw Harvey, signed by Aldman Costello.
In ordinance of the city of Borton, Missouri, amending section 500.020 relating to application of codes.
Entertained a motion for second reading and passage of bill number 22-18.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Aldman Delloy, signed by Aldman Schultz.
In ordinance of the city of Borton, Missouri, amending section 500.020 relating to application of codes.
Roll call vote.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shaw Harvey?
Yes.
Aldman Costello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Bill passes six-zero. I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of bill number 23-18.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Aldman Shaw Harvey, signed by Aldman Delloy.
In ordinance of the city of Borton, Missouri, adopting the 2015 International Building Code.
Entertained a motion, or entertained a motion for the second reading and passage of bill number 23-18.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Aldman Miller, signed by Aldman Costello.
In ordinance of the city of Borton, Missouri, adopting the 2015 International Building Code.
Roll call vote.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shaw Harvey?
Yes.
Aldman Costello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Bill passes six-zero. I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of bill number 24-18.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Aldman Costello, signed by Aldman Shaw Harvey.
In ordinance of the city of Borton, Missouri, adopting the 2015 International Existing Building Code.
Entertained a motion for the second reading and passage of bill number 24-18.
So moved. Second.
See you at the same time. We'll give it to Miller. Motion made by Aldman Delloy, signed by Aldman Miller.
In ordinance of the city of Borton, Missouri, adopting the 2015 International Existing Building Code.
Roll call vote.
Aldman Shaw Harvey?
Yes.
Aldman Costello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Bill passes six-zero. I'll entertain a motion for first reading of bill number 25-18.
Move. Second.
Motion made by Aldman Shaw Harvey, signed by Aldman Miller. No? Delloy, sorry. Did you say it too?
Oh, it's fine. Okay.
In ordinance of the city of Borton, Missouri, adopting the NFPA-70 National Electrical Code 2014.
Entertained a motion for the second reading and passage of bill number 25-18.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Aldman Schultz, signed by Aldman Costello.
In ordinance of the city of Borton, Missouri, adopting the NFPA-70 National Electrical Code 2014.
Roll call vote.
Aldman Costello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shaw Harvey?
Yes.
Bill passes six-zero. I want to entertain a motion for the first reading of bill number 26-18.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Aldman Schultz, signed by Aldman Miller.
In ordinance of the city of Borton, Missouri, adopting the 2015 International Plumbing Code.
Entertained a motion for the second reading and passage of 26, bill number 26-18.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Aldman Delloy, signed by Aldman Schultz.
In ordinance of the city of Borton, Missouri, adopting the 2015 International Plumbing Code.
Roll call vote.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shaw Harvey?
Yes.
Aldman Costello?
Yes.
Bill passes six-zero. I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of bill number 27-18.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Aldman Shaw Harvey, signed by Aldman Miller.
In ordinance of the city of Borton, Missouri, adopting the 2015 International Fuel Gas Code.
Entertained a motion for the second reading and passage of bill number 27-18.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Aldman Costello, signed by Aldman Shaw Harvey.
In ordinance of the city of Borton, Missouri, adopting the 2015 International Fuel Gas Code.
Roll call vote.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shaw Harvey?
Yes.
Aldman Costello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Bill passes six-zero. I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of bill number 28-18.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Aldman Shaw Harvey, signed by Aldman Miller.
In ordinance of the city of Borton, Missouri, adopting the 2015 International Mechanical Code.
Entertained a motion for the second reading and passage of bill number 28-18.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Aldman Delloy, signed by Aldman Schultz.
In ordinance of the city of Borton, Missouri, adopting the 2015 International Mechanical Code.
Roll call vote.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shaw Harvey?
Yes.
Aldman Costello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Entertained a motion for the first reading in 20, I'm sorry, back up. That bill passed six-zero. I'll entertain a mo, motion for the first reading of bill number 29-18.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Aldman Costello, signed by Aldman Shaw Harvey.
In ordinance of the city of Borton, Missouri, adopting the 2015 International Energy Conservation Code.
Entertained a motion for the second reading and passage of bill number 29-18.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Aldman Schultz, signed by Aldman Shaw Harvey.
In ordinance of the city of Borton, Missouri, adopting the 2015 International Energy Conservation Code.
Roll call vote.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shaw Harvey?
Yes.
Aldman Costello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Bill passes six-zero. I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of bill number 30-18.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Aldman Delloy, signed by Aldman Schultz.
In ordinance of the city of Borton, Missouri, adopting the 2015 International Residential Code.
I'll entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of bill number 30-18.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Aldman Miller, and I'm going to let you guys, uh, signed by Aldman Shaw Harvey.
In ordinance of the city of Borton, Missouri, adopting the 2015 International Residential Code.
Roll call vote.
Aldman Shaw Harvey?
Yes.
Aldman Costello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Bill passes six-zero. I want to entertain a motion for the first reading of bill number 31-18.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Aldman Delloy, signed by Aldman Costello.
In ordinance of the city of Borton, Missouri, adopting the 2015 International Private Sewer Disposal Code.
I'll entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of bill number 31-18.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Aldman Shaw Harvey, signed by Aldman Costello.
In ordinance of the city of Borton, Missouri, adopting the 2015 International Private Sewer Disposal Code.
Roll call vote.
Aldman Costello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shaw Harvey?
Yes.
Bill passes six-zero. I'll entertain a motion for the first reading of bill number 32-18.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Aldman Shaw Harvey, signed by Aldman Costello.
In ordinance of the city of Borton, Missouri, adopting the 2015 International Fire Code.
Entertained a motion for the second reading and passage of bill number 32-18.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Aldman Schultz, signed by Aldman Delloy.
In ordinance of the city of Borton, Missouri, adopting the 2015 International Fire Code.
Roll call vote.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shaw Harvey?
Yes.
Aldman Costello?
Yes.
Bill passes six-zero. Entertained a motion for the first reading of bill number 33-18.
So moved.
Two people at the same time. I'm going to go with Ock.
Second.
Motion, motion made by Aldman Ock, signed by Aldman Schultz.
In ordinance of the city of Borton, Missouri, adopting the 2015 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code.
I'll entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of bill number 33-18.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Aldman Miller, signed by Aldman Schultz.
In ordinance of the city of Borton, Missouri, adopting the 2015 International Swimming Pool and Spa Code.
Roll call vote.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shaw Harvey?
Yes.
Aldman Costello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Bill passes six-zero. Entertained a motion for the first reading of bill number 34-18.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Aldman Schultz, signed by Aldman Shaw Harvey.
In ordinance of the city of Borton, regulating the operation of motorized wheelchairs, golf carts, low-speed vehicles, all-terrain vehicles, utility vehicles, and recreational off-highway vehicles on city streets.
I'll entertain a motion for the second reading and passage of bill number 34-18.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Aldman Delloy, signed by Aldman Schultz.
In ordinance of the city of Borton, regulating the operation of motorized wheelchairs, golf carts, low-speed vehicles, all-terrain vehicles, utility vehicles, and recreational off-highway vehicles on city streets.
Roll call vote.
Aldman Delloy?
Yes.
Aldman Schultz?
Yes.
Aldman Shaw Harvey?
Yes.
Aldman Costello?
Yes.
Aldman Ock?
Yes.
Aldman Miller?
Yes.
Bill passes six-zero. I'll entertain a motion to close the regular board of aldermen meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are so adjourned. No?